I'm being present, I'll call the meeting to order and extend Mr. Gilbert's apologies. He's tied up in depositions and won't be joining us tonight. Recognize any visitors who would like to bring him out before the council that's not otherwise on our agenda. Ms. Hogg Hartman?
My name is Emma Jean Hogg Hartman, and I would like to give you a quick update on the Berea Health Ministry, which is located in the basement area of St. Joe Berea, who has so graciously provided facility for them. And as you know, Berea Health Ministry gives medical attention in conjunction with economic, emotional, and spiritual assistance to hundreds of people in Madison County and several surrounding counties. The last Saturday of this month, Saturday, March 26th, is one of their major fundraising, excuse me, events. I would certainly like to welcome the council and all of our people here tonight and all the citizens of Berea to do several things. One, if you can and will, purchase a ticket to the brunch that will be held at Fellowship Hall at Berea Baptist Church, which is a fundraiser. The program is outstanding. We're going to do something really unique, and I'd like for as many Berea citizens to get there as possible. We're going to auction off lunches at Boone Tavern with the elite, or the elaborate, or the privileged, or the great, or whatever term. Our mayor is one of those persons, and we need someone there to bid on him in the event that no one will bid on him. The recipients who are going to be there for us to bid on are pledging to take the bidder and his or her guest to Boone Tavern for lunch. So it's going to be a fun thing. We hope it'll be a big fundraiser. So for all of you who have good health insurance, I hope that you will consider making a sizable donation to the Berea Health Ministry. And for those of you who do not have health insurance, I hope that you will give the Berea Health Ministry a call. That's the reason they're here, is to provide health insurance for the uninsured and the underinsured. So please keep Saturday, March 26th, 9:30 brunch. Tickets are $20, but we'll be glad to take your $100 bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Other citizens with messages? Yes, ma'am?
I'm not sure if it's on the agenda. Is the fairness ordinance on the agenda? You already provided your feelings. Call.
It's not on the agenda.
My name is Laura Schaus, and I have sent letters to the council members already on this issue. And I want to thank Mr. Fields for calling and leaving me a message, and I've spoken to him on the phone about it. And I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I neglected to give you a copy. So I will take care of that and make sure that you get a copy of my letter as soon as possible.
Listen attentively.
All right. I just have a very short little thing I want to read here, and I apologize for doing that, but I'm not used to public speaking. I'm a little bit nervous, so I just wanted to read over this really quickly. Before I do that, I want to preface that I did attend the forum at Eastern Kentucky University on February 24th regarding the fairness ordinance. Okay, here's my statement. God teaches us to be loving and tolerant toward people, but not towards sin. Over the last two decades, we have become desensitized to the sin of homosexuality. However, that has not changed the fact that homosexuality is a sin. That fact comes straight from the Bible, God's true and perfect word. Man should not make laws encouraging and supporting sin. Furthermore, no legislative body should pass an ordinance which provides protection to one group of people but which encourages discrimination against another group of people. I'm not a politician, and I do not profess to have all the answers, but I do know what is right and what is wrong. Homosexuality is wrong, and I cannot and will never support an ordinance which endorses this type of sinful behavior in our city, county, and state. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, sir?
I'd like to rest the fairness issue.
I'm right up. Tell us your name, please.
My name's Mickey Bowley, and I'm a member of Berea Evangelistic Church. I have letters from Berea Evangelistic Church for the council members and the mayor. Also have a letter from Pastor Mark Sarver from Church on the Rock for the mayor and the eight council members. Would you like me to distribute those, or?
Well, why don't you give them to Mr. Stone, and he can pass them out?
All right. The letter simply says, Dear Mayor Connolly and Council Members, it's come to our attention that you and other members of the Berea City Council will be discussing adding a fairness issue regarding making it a crime for institutions to discriminate against homosexuals being added to the discrimination section of the city ordinances. We would like for you to be aware of the, that the members of Church on the Rock and Berea Evangelistic Church, which I have authority to speak for both, with membership nearly 1,100, oppose the fairness issue being added to the city ordinances. We agree with others in our community. Many feel that this lifestyle should not be allowed to force its way into businesses and institutions. We feel that this should not be allowed any more than giving special preference to persons practicing a heterosexual lifestyle, an adulterous lifestyle, or a premarital sexual lifestyle. We are to love and to seek, share Jesus Christ with individuals regardless of that lifestyle, but to force a lifestyle upon a Christian community restricts our freedom. And we pray the Lord bless you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other citizens? Sir?
My name is Bill Woods. I'm the pastor at Middletown Baptist Church and speaking behalf of several of our Baptist churches in the area. It's strange, I was scared to death when I get in the pulpit and my knees shake and everything else, but back there it hides it in front of a political body. It bothers me. I'll never forget talking to the Warren County Fiscal Court back when judges had judicial power and representing the state, and he didn't like what I had to say about the state, and he put me in jail over the weekend for contempt of his court. But we were advised by leaders of other denominations other than Baptist made contact with our church, indicating that the Human Rights Commission made, or had plans to present to the council a fairness issue doctrine to be incorporated into the discrimination laws. And first, I would say, I'm a lifelong resident of Berea. Years ago, I had a much more girlish figure than I do today, but I remember me when I was younger. We taught school together for a while. But I have had individuals that were homosexual that approached me when I was as young as nine years old, because I traveled in a circle as six-girl cousins. I traveled in girl circle. I babysat two sisters and brother. I cooked, I cleaned, I sewed. Evidently, I fit the profile of some people who thought that I would be a good candidate to approach, and I said, no. I felt like that took care of it. When I worked for the state, I had opportunity to hire individuals that I knew were either lesbian or homosexual, and it made no difference as far as my hiring of those people. In fact, if they were the best for the job and the most creative, that's who I hired. And I gave merit raises, as merit raises were due, so I don't consider myself to be homophobic. On the other hand, as has been stated before, I don't believe that lifestyle, whether it's a heterosexual lifestyle, it's a bisexual lifestyle, an adulterous lifestyle, premarriage sex lifestyle, homosexual or lesbian lifestyle, has a place in discrimination laws. And I base that upon the fact that Pastor Church and Law, Volume Three Employment Law by Richard R. Hammer, J.D., L.L.M., CPA, who has researched across the country and has found that there have been as many instances of courts that caused problems with religious institutions, churches or various ones, who had problems with those that they had hired, secretarial, janitor, etc., realizing that federal law excludes ministers and ministerial positions from the discrimination laws, that they had problems. And he made a statement on page 222 of that book where he said, "This invites an unconstitutional entanglement of the church with the judicial and administrative branches of government." We conclude there is not an effective waiver in this case," basically saying that you could not even exempt churches from those non-ministerial positions if that were a part of your ordinances with regard to discrimination. Also know that our Sunshine Baptist Children's Home had an occurrence that happened in Louisville, Kentucky, where an individual that was lesbian began approaching teenage girls and was dismissed. And due to the ordinances that were in effect that said you could not discriminate based on sexual orientation, the state of Kentucky Cabinet for Families and Children cut off all funding to the Sunshine Children's Home for those children that were there, children whose parents either had deserted them, abused them, neglected them, or done various things to them that required a court removing many of those children from their homes. So those ordinances do impact and do affect. I ask, I've had two ministers that I asked to come, and both because they said of the notoriety fearful of demonstrations and the non-Christian community, thinking that they were homophobic, they would not come. But they had secretarial staff that claimed discrimination due to sexual orientation in locations here in the state. And as a result, they ended up settling the disputes financially, and the person left rather than pursue their claim of discrimination. But they would not come because they said it would cause harm to their church and the communities where they were. So we respectfully ask the council that should you be approached by the Human Rights Commission, and we understand that that is something that is in the making, that you consider our positions and the problems that can occur from such ordinances that exist as adopted by local forms of government. And as I say, our church, just as we would love the person who was adulterant, invite them to come to our church, a person who's engaged in premarital sex, bisexual, homosexual, or whatever, we also believe that the Bible speaks against those lifestyles, and we, while we love the person, we do not love the sins. And a friend of mine years ago asked me if I would do his funeral, and considered him to be a close friend. He died of pneumonia with HIV virus because of his lifestyle that he had. Didn't make me weep any less for him. So it is not that we dislike or we hate the person. And sometimes people, when they hear us speak, they say, well, you're hateful and you're mean-spirited, and we don't come in that attitude. And I appreciate your opportunity to speak.
Sir, thank you. Any other citizens? Yes, sir?
First off, my name's Tim Taylor from, I represent Wayside Christian Church here in Berea, and I agree wholeheartedly what has been said so far. And I know all of y'all have a great responsibility in the decisions y'all make. And I got just three questions for you. One is, why do you need another ordinance stating the protection of one certain group of people when there's already discrimination laws in place that protects each citizen from discrimination? Secondly, if you do vote to put this in place, are you also going to vote on an ordinance for other groups, such as Christian churches or Baptist churches or whatever? When you start one, you got to do the other ones, be fair, if you want to call it the Fairness Act. And I've got verses from the King James Version. I didn't make a copy for everyone, but I'll let y'all read it, stating that homosexuality is an abomination to God. And that's, no matter how, which way you twist it and turn it, if y'all pass it, it still is wrong. Y'all never change the fact that it's wrong. And like Brother Wood said, I don't mean to sound crude or rude or mean towards anybody. We try to show Jesus' love to everybody. The third question is, I'd like to know how y'all go about getting compensation for being Tim Taylor's, for the street department's answering service? I'd like to know how I go about getting compensation for being Tim Taylor, the street superintendent's phone call, answering service.
You get a lot of calls.
I get a lot of his calls. Not all bad, but some of them are.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
And I'd also like to report only one thing, too. Wayside Christian Church, you know, has all the water problems we had, spent $40,000 this past year on flood damage. And with the state coming in there putting bigger ditches in the work we done, the water problem is solved, so you won't be hearing no more from that from me. So, thank you.
Very good. Anybody else? Yes, sir?
My name is Guy Townsend. I'm a resident of Berea, and I happen to have read the Gospels. And I happen to know, as these people who are claiming Jesus is on their side would know if they had read the Gospels, that Jesus does not in any place in the four Gospels address the subject of homosexuality. Thank you. And you can read the Bible if you don't believe it.
Okay. I guess we're about approval of the minutes of 2,000... Minutes. Mr. Wagers?
One exception, please.
Motion to amend?
Motion to amend. From the planning and zoning, it says, oh, I did vote no on that.
That's correct. Page two, it should indicate that Mr. Wagers voted no. Okay. Any other changes? With that addition, then, do you move acceptance of the minutes?
Yes.
And we have a second before the discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Minutes are approved as amended. Mr. Craig Williams?
Yes.
Do you have a report on the chemical group?
Pull that around. I got it. This is fine. Usually I don't need a mic, but thank you. Good evening, everyone. It's good to see you all here. I appreciate the opportunity to update you on the chemical weapons disposal project that's under construction at the Bluegrass Army Depot, as most of you know. Also, I want to point out on the front end, and I'll pass this around, there is a, you all are invited to a tour of the facility, including the chemical limited area, Mach Igloo, which is a replica of the igloos that are inside the restricted area that house the chemical weapons, as well as the construction site for the disposal plant, as well as for the depot proper to be briefed on its other missions besides the mission of the chemical weapon storage and disposal. That tour is on 24 March, and I have an itinerary here and a sign-up sheet for anyone who is a member of this body who has not signed up already. And if you can't make that one, you can get ahold of me, and we'll try to have an alternative opportunity for you to tour it. I'd urge you to do so. It's a, quite an impressive undertaking, and I think you'll also be impressed with the progress that's been made over the last several years. So I'm going to try to go through this relatively quickly. As you saw on the cover page, and each one of you has a copy of this presentation, I invite you to follow along, or look at the screen, or take a nap if you'd like, Mr. Mayor.
Lights are a little bright, though.
I can have Paul turn them down. First of all, it noted me as the host community liaison, and I just wanted to point out to you, particularly those who are new members of the council, what that means as Kentucky revised statute states. I was appointed to this position in 15 April of 2009, so almost two years ago. Some of these slides will be somewhat repetitious to those who I briefed in September, but all of the information in them is updated. But I thought in the interest particularly of those new members or those who weren't in the audience in September, that they should kind of get a little bit of background and get brought up to date so that when they take the tour, they're on the same page and in current understanding of where we are. There are four issue areas that we are currently focused on. I also serve on the Governor's Commission and on the Citizens Advisory Board. I co-chair that board with Judge Clark, and I stood on the Governor's Commission as well, which is chaired by Dr. Heineman. And the four areas that we're focused on primarily right now are the long-term funding and schedule issues, and you'll see parenthetically a non-McCurty breach, which I'm going to talk briefly about later in the presentation. The current construction status, we're currently 30% complete with the construction of the facility, the mustard round X-ray operations and explosive detonation technology, and the economic impact, current and long-term. Just briefly to go over some of the history, this is, I won't go through all of this, but I will say that since the decision to use neutralization and supercritical water oxidation as the disposal method here in Kentucky, below, you can see the funding levels associated with that effort. What's of particular interest is the column on the right, which shows that when this decision was made and the funds were initiated, there was an accelerated schedule directive from the Pentagon, and the estimated completion date for the project at that point was 2014. As you can see, as you go down the list on the left in concurrent years, you'll see that the funding for the project is all over the map, including an extremely shortfall in 2006, which pushed the schedule back tremendously. After that, we were at a completion date projection of 2023. Since that time, in 2010, we've, the directive has now been modified back to the original directive, which was to accelerate the project, and now the scheduled completion date is 2021. And you will notice on the bottom line that I have 2019 with question marks next to it, and that's because there are people involved in the project who believe we can cut some time off that 2021 completion date if everything goes right, if the funding is sustained, there's no permitting problems, and things of that nature. So I emphasize the word estimated, that's at the top of that column, but currently the formal projection for completion is 2021. The next slide shows this year's president's budget request for the program. There are two sites that are under this Aqua program, the Assembled Chemical Weapons Alternatives Program, Pueblo, Colorado, and Bluegrass, Kentucky. And you can see the numbers here, I won't read them to you, but you can see that the Bluegrass facility is getting a significant amount of money in 2012, if the budget passes, $477 million for both sites, and it's almost evenly split. That was what was in the president's request. That is now over at Congress. And as you know, with the budget deficits being what they are, everything is under extreme scrutiny in budgeting on Capitol Hill. However, we have gotten many assurances from people way up the chain of command, including the secretary himself, Mr. Gates, that this program is safe and won't be cut. That remains to be seen, because the Congress giveth and the Congress taketh away. This is the current funding guidance for the out years, or the future years. Every five years, they come out with a new funding guidance that looks at the coming five years budget and what they expect to ask for. If you'll notice, under 2012, the projection was for $470, and the previous slide showed you that the president's request was $7 million above that, which we find to be a very positive indication of the seriousness and the commitment that Defense Department has to this project. And this is where I want to just digress for a moment and go back to what I called the non-McCurty breach in the previous slide. Any major acquisition program within the Pentagon that exceeds its budgetary limit by 15% or more, or 25% or more, is determined to be in what they call breach of the non-McCurty Act. If it's 25% or more, then it is considered a critical breach. This program was just designated as in critical breach of the non-McCurty Act about three months ago. What does that mean? It means that the last time they projected a complete cost for the project compared to the most recent time they projected a complete cost for the project, the cost currently was 25% more than the previous cost. Why was that? There's a number of reasons, but the primary reason is that the last time they had to bring that estimate forward, they only had 30% of the facility designed. So it's kind of like trying to bid on building a house when you don't have the plans in front of you. You have maybe a sketch. Say, what do you think it's going to cost to build this house? $100,000. Well, then, when you find out there's eight chandeliers and shag carpeting and three-car garage, things have a tendency to go up. We're currently, when I say we, the Pentagon is currently reviewing all of the data and will bring forward a recommendation shortly, they have to do it within 120 days of last month, to recertify to Congress the need for this program, based on national security, based on the technology of choice, the cost, and the management. All indications are that will go forward, and it will not be a problem for the execution of the project. We're watching it very closely. If anything changes on that, we'll let you know. This is a schedule currently of the milestones for the project. As you can see, construction is underway. Systemization will begin shortly, and then operations will begin in 2018 and complete in 2021. This is the schedule according to the latest estimate. One thing this program has learned over the years is to not overpromise schedule. For those of you that go way back in this program, you'll remember it was all supposed to be done nationally by 1994. So we missed that mark by a few years. And there are still three operating incinerators, the two neutralization facilities are done, we have two under construction, and there's one incineration facility in Arkansas that's done. So nobody got anywhere close to the original projected date. This is what you will see if you come out with this on the 24th. This is the construction site. It is quite a massive operation. This is the control and support building over here. As you can see, it's completely under roof, and they're actually inside there now, particularly in the inclement weather that we've had over the past, well, months, actually. It's been quite a winter. They've been able to do a lot of the electrical and conduit work and all of the necessary interior work inside that facility. all of the necessary interior work inside that facility. This part here is what they call, this is the main building, the Munitions Disposal Building, and it extends from here all the way out to here, with this section being the explosive containment room. All of this other apparatus is secondary treatment after the weapons go through and get the agent pumped out of the rockets, and the explosives are separated, and so on and so forth, and that material moves into the processing area, there's no longer a risk of explosion. And so these walls are specifically built to contain any explosion that might occur during processing. This is a view from west to east of the same building, taken at the same time, this is about three weeks ago, and you can see right here all the rebar, they're about to pour the second level of the explosive containment building of the Munitions Disposal Building. This is the drop-off of the holding tanks for the supercritical water oxidation product, the end product. It'll be held in these tanks, it'll be tested and so on before it moves on to the next stage. And you can see from that picture that some of this equipment is pretty large. I just want to touch on this a minute. You may have read about the X-ray process that's going to take place shortly on the mustard rounds that are stored here. Many of these rounds, we've discovered, because we have the same manufacturing lots as those in Utah where they ran into trouble, and where they're deploying an explosive detonation technology there, as well as in Alabama, both incineration sites, they couldn't handle these rounds either. They couldn't get the bursters out of the rounds because they had corroded. And what they started doing was actually sending workers in, in full moon suits with hand tools, trying to pull these bursters out of these rounds. Well, after they did that 20 or 30 times, and they realized there was probably hundreds more of these, they did the smart thing and said, we can't keep putting our workers at risk, we've got to find another way to do this. And they consulted with the National Research Council and others, and this explosive detonation technology is what they're planning to do with some of our mustard rounds, and in order to find out how many they anticipate being problem rounds, they're going to X-ray a random sample of them from these igloos, and extrapolate from that how many they expect to have to be treated in this EDT. That will help us determine which EDT we recommend, as the advisory board and the advisory commission up to the military, and then we will collectively choose one of these. And basically, what it is, is a 3/4-inch steel, double-walled containment vessel in which a round is placed, and it is exploded inside that vessel. They use these in Europe and in Japan, and God bless Japan, by the way, at the moment. And they use them primarily for recovered rounds from World War I and World War II in the European theater. Any information you want on any of this, or questions that you have, please, I'm trying to get through this fairly quickly. This is really something that's very exciting. This is the economic impact of what's going on out there now. The most exciting part is what we're doing in the Economic Development Working Group of the Advisory Board, but this will give you an update on where we are now. Currently, there's 799 people working, associated with this job. Of that, 663 of them are working here in Madison County. There are some out in Washington that are working on first-of-a-kind equipment, and there are some in Pasadena that are working on the squo units and so on. 51% of those people are local hires, in other words, regionally here in Kentucky. 285 are actual hands-on craft workers, 378 are non-manual engineers, environmental people, safety people, and so on. That number's going to flip-flop as construction increases, and there'll be less non-manual and more craft people. So far, there's been 69.7 million spent on Kentucky businesses, and you can see the payroll down here, thus far, $183 million's a local payroll. They're expecting close to $450 million in additional payroll. Obviously, that's a great economic thing to have going on, particularly in this current economic climate. And I would point out that that number, the 799 jobs, has gone up 101 jobs since you were briefed in September. And that one, I don't remember precisely the number, that was 590 in September, and now it's 663 Madison County workers. So that, I think, is a very encouraging thing to understand about this project, that it is hiring a lot of people, it's putting a lot of money back into the community, both in the workforce and in the business community. Here's the life cycle staffing projections as we go through time. You'll see we're right here now in 2011, and we're actually above that curve. As time goes along, that's going to increase, until we're in full-scale operations, at which time we'll have close to 1,000 jobs between the period of 18 and 21, unless the schedule moves to the left, then the top of the graph will move a little to the left. But that is also encouraging from an economic standpoint, from a tax revenue standpoint, from an employment standpoint. Now, this brings us to where we are today with the Economic Development Working Group of the Advisory Board. And what we're trying to do is avoid what is happening in Alabama, and in Arkansas, and in Oregon, in the places that are winding down their disposal projects. When I was in Colorado Springs last year, representatives from all of those sites were there, and they were all wringing their hands about the 700, 800 workers that are now going to be unemployed because the mission is over. And what are these people going to do? And what kind of impact is it going to have on their community and their region? What we're doing is taking a step as an advisory board and a subgroup of that, which I co-chair with David Binge, who's the vice president of the Cumberland Valley National Bank up in Richmond, is to look out into the future and see how do we take advantage, not only of the infrastructure that's being built because of this project, which includes the urban road widening and the first portion of 25 South from the bypass, all has to do with that project, but also, can we use the facilities that are in there for the rest of the depot mission once the chemical weapons are gone? What does it take to do that? How many people would that employ? Can we take advantage of the resources, the human resources, that have come to our region because of this job? We have 378 experts sitting in the Richmond Mall, doing engineering, doing safety reviews, doing environmental oversight, permitting, explosive experts, all of these people are here in Madison County. When this facility is done, we don't want them all to go away. We'd like to figure out now how we can attract them to stay here. Can we get some of the subcontractors to this project to locate some satellite offices here, to keep some of these people here? These are high-paying jobs, these are professional people, and these are the kinds of things that we want to look at now, when we're years out from it being closed, so that we don't wind up with a boom and bust reality here. And it's a great venture. We've got the Bluegrass Area Development District and the Office of Military Affairs up in Frankfurt involved in this. Tom McKay from here is involved, David's involved, Jimmy Howard from Richmond, the county's involved, everybody's involved in this process to try and look to the future and see how we can take long-term advantage of the opportunities that this project presents. It's very exciting, I'm not going to go through the slide, you can read it for yourself, but I think you'll find it quite encompassing in its scope of what we're going to try to look at in this study. Here are some of the specifics of the study we're going to look at as time goes along, and we hope that many of these things, we can come up with a vision and a mechanism by which to help the depot sustain its operations and help the community improve its economic base. Fort Knox is a perfect example of how they turned a disaster into a wonderful situation. They got rid of the tank battalion, and everybody thought the base was going to close, they turned it into a personnel and administrative center, and the employment went up by over 1,000 people. The housing industry and everything associated with that kind of increase to the community is booming around Fort Knox. That's the same kind of thing we want to do with this. It helps protect the depot and all those jobs, and it will also improve the revenue and the just the general health of the community. So here's some contact information. If there's any information you need on anything having to do with the project, you can please feel free, you can contact me if I don't know the answer, I'll get it for you. If they don't know the answer, they'll get it for you. And if all of us don't know the answer, Truman will get it for you.
You got it.
So that's it, and I appreciate your time very much, and I'll take any questions that you might have. I would also like to circulate this sign-up sheet, and if your name's not on it, and you're interested in going on the 24th, the itinerary is on the back, you can feel free to sign up and take a copy of the itinerary, and please join us on the 24th if you'd like.
Questions for Mr. Williams?
Questions.
About 10 years completion?
That's what they're predicting right now. There are some people who think it will be less than that, but nobody wants to say that and be wrong.
Who's in charge of your post-project economic development planning?
Currently, it's the Subcommittee of the Advisory Board, is chaired by myself and David Binge, the vice president of the Cumberland Valley National Bank in Richmond. A lot of the heavy lifting is being done by Lenny Stoltz, who is the executive director of the Bluegrass Area Development District, and his staff. We're also working in conjunction with the Depot Development Coalition, which is a separate entity that's looking at ways to sustain the depot's operation per se, not the chemical piece. You may not know, but the chemical activity is simply a tenant on the depot, and really doesn't function as part of the depot's primary mission. And this development, this Depot Development Coalition meets regularly, I'm part of that as well, to identify ways to sustain the depot's economic viability, and particularly to keep it off the base closure list, which every four or five years, the military, the Pentagon identifies certain places that get closed, and they consolidate somewhere else. That's the second-largest employer in the county, and we want to keep it there.
Got you. Other questions for Mr. Williams? Sir, we appreciate the update.
Appreciate that. Just one more note, Mr. Mayor, as you know, Chester Powell has been put forth by you to represent the council in Howard Baker's place, God rest his soul, and I've been in communication with him, we expect him to be participating soon. Diane Kirby, who was on the Governor's Commission, her name is going to be brought forward to the Governor's Office on Commissions here, I think, next week if it hasn't been done already, and she's going to be invited to come back on to the Governor's Commission on this project, and everybody's in favor of that, so we'd be happy to have her back. I'm not so sure how happy she'll be to be back, but it'd be great to have her. So thanks very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. New business, strategic plan. You should find a revised strategic plan that has come out of our most recent meeting at your place. Please take it, review it. Substantively, it should be quite similar, format has been, things have been moved around a little bit, but please read it critically, and if you have questions, changes, suggestions, please email me, and once we get all those suggestions and criticisms, we'll bring it back before the council for final adoption. Mr. Burnside, Audit and Finance Committee?
Two items, Mr. Mayor. The Audit and Finance Committee met with the rest of the council this evening to review the amended budget. We're in amended budget process, which means that once a year, the city comes back about mid-year or so, or they're about to look at their budget, what's been budgeted, what their revenue stream looks like, the expenses, make those adjustments. And so we spent this evening going through the general fund budget, as well as the utilities also, and that budget will be forthcoming for first reading, probably next council meeting, I would say. The second item of business is that the Audit and Finance Committee had been, two bids had been referred to them in terms of protective clothing or turnout gear for the fire department. There was two bids that were received, and this evening, I'd like to make the recommendation that the council accept a bid from Bluegrass Fire Equipment Company in the amount of $15,535 for this turnout gear.
Second that. Motion then to accept the bid of Bluegrass Fire Equipment?
Yes.
In the amount of $15,535? Discussion, comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, no? Bids accepted and awarded? Anything else, Mr. Burnside?
That's all I have.
Any department head like to supplement the written report? City administrators report?
Actually, I'll just say any questions you may have, I think we probably bombarded you for three hours earlier with the information, so if you have any questions, I'd be glad to take them.
Questions for Mr. Stone? I must say, those were good sandwiches. I have no comments. Council comments? Mr. Burnside?
None.
Kirby?
None, thank you.
Mr. Little?
Just one. I noticed that when Madison County Fiscal Court has their meetings up here, they play them back, and they just supplane, what's the difference when they play back and how come we can't? What's the deal on that? I was watching them this week on a replay.
They replay them in Richmond, on the Richmond Channel.
But they tape them here then, they tape them, I guess they'd have to, wouldn't they? They have to tape them here.
They play initially live on Channel 12. Where they tape them, I don't know. Then they replay them on Channel 46, I believe, which is their public access channel through their equipment.
So they've got the correct equipment then, to replay them and replay them out? Is that correct then?
I don't know how you want to frame it, they have equipment that's different than ours. Whether it's correct or not, I don't know.
I mean, just any time you turn it on, it seemed like you watched Madison County Fiscal There's some people asked me, and I thought I'd ask the question, I didn't, that's all.
But if the, you know, you raised a good point that the new budget's coming up, if the council wants to investigate and allocate more money to upgrade, or dedicate a person, or amplify the process that we have, we could set the counties as a model of something that we might want to try to achieve.
No, if we get some public input and see how much people wanted it, that would be what I would suggest, if the citizens out there would like to have it, you know, it might be something we should offer, if we could.
Would you like to do a little investigation and spec out maybe what the county has and what the cost was, and as a comparison? Maybe you could report back to the council about what they have and what...
I don't care to find out from the county, I'll talk to the judge and see what he's got.
We'll look forward to the report.
Thank you.
Mr. Wagers? Oh, I'm sorry, oh, yeah, Ms. Farmer, yeah.
No comment, thank you.
Mr. Wagers?
No.
You're answering around the question, aren't you?
Mr. Blandau?
No, no comment.
Mr. Fields?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Williams, for keeping us updated, it's very important to the county and to all of us.
This meeting's adjourned.